Let me click.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Wednesday, December 5th, 2021. A meeting of the Palm Springs Planning Commission and it's a four o'clock meeting for a study session. Can we have a roll call, please? Shall I do the roll call?
I'll do the roll call, sorry, Madam Chair. Commissioner Marutti?
Here.
Commissioner Hirschbaum is excused. Commissioner Irvin?
Here.
Commissioner Layen?
Here.
Vice Chair Roberts is excused, but will join us later. Chair Wermuth?
Present.
We have a question.
And can I have a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, our agenda was posted on Thursday, December 9th, so our meeting has been posted in accordance with state law.
This is a time for public comment. Are there any members of the public that wish to address the commission? Seeing none, public comment is closed. And we will go to the first item, which is an introduction and discussion on the new state housing laws, SB 9 and SB 10. And.
Madam Chair, I'd like to go ahead and just do a brief introduction, and then after that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Todd Leishman, who is our attorney from BBK, who specifically advises us on housing issues. The issue of SB 9 is a bill that was signed into law this past fall and becomes effective on January the 1st. Mr. Leishman will go into additional details. But it is something that impacts all cities in the state of California, and consequently, we will need to move forward and do an urgency ordinance to adopt provisions in support of SB 9. In terms of our schedule, let me just, if you don't mind, share my screen for a moment. We are going to be moving forward with an urgency ordinance at the city council level on January the 13th. As an urgency ordinance, we need to follow that up with a regular ordinance, and so what we are going to do is bring that forward to the planning commission on January the 26th, and then introduce it for first reading at city council on January the 27th. Now, the regular ordinance that I'm speaking of is more or less the draft ordinance that Chair Wermuth distributed this afternoon to you via email. However, there may be some aspects of that ordinance that we will wish to tailor to our own specific conditions. One of the things that we can do is look at objective design standards that can be used by staff to evaluate these proposed lot splits and the resulting units that will be built on them. And so what I would recommend to you as the planning commission is that we establish a work group that will meet during the months of February and March to talk about these objective standards, and then bring that forward as an amendment to the SB 9 ordinance in April to the planning commission, and then follow up with city council in May. So just to summarize, we'll move forward with the ordinance more or less as proposed that you are reviewing this afternoon as an urgency ordinance and then a regular ordinance, and then later this spring, we will do some tailoring of that. And Mr. Leishman might also give you some additional thoughts in terms of how we might tailor that to the city of Palm Springs. So with that, that is my brief introduction, and I will turn it over to Mr. Leishman to go into information about the bill and the proposed urgency ordinance. So, Mr. Leishman?
Thank you, Glenn. Just to double check, can everyone hear me all right?
Yes.
Good. Thank you for confirming. Due to the crush of cities all adopting SB 9 ordinances, I find myself in the undesirable position of speaking to you from a car. So if at any point it becomes difficult to hear me, please let me know, and I will pull over where it appears that I have a strong signal. The overview of SB 9 is that it's a pro-housing bill meant to facilitate the development, this very streamlined development of affordable design, affordable by design, housing in R1 zones. And when I say R1, I really just mean the typical zone that cities usually have, where a single dwelling is the primary use of that property. I'll use R1 throughout this discussion as a shorthand, because you probably have at least one, possibly two different variations on that theme. So what SB 9 does is there are two key sections of this bill. The first section, well, I'll start with the second section. The second section of the bill allows urban lot splits by right in, on an R1 lot. So an existing R1 lot can be split into two by right or ministerially without any discretionary review or discretionarily imposed conditions. That can happen in every single R1 lot in Palm Springs. The lot has to be split roughly fifty-fifty. At most, it can be a sixty-forty split between the two resulting halves, well, parts. And a lot must, we must allow, the city must allow lot splits where the resulting lots would be as little as twelve hundred square feet. So in terms of minimum lot size for one of these urban lot splits, the state has said that the minimum lot size must be twelve hundred square feet or lower, if the city so choose, so chose. On an urban lot, or on a resulting lot, on a lot that results from an urban lot split under SB 9, there can be a maximum of two dwellings on each of those resulting halves. And those dwellings can be dwellings of any kind. They can be primary dwellings under the R1 zone or SB 9. They can all, they can also be junior ADUs or ADUs. So on a, on what was an original lot, R1 lot with a single dwelling, there can be two lots with two units each. And again, that's all by right. The other key section of SB 9 is in, it's actually the first section of the bill, where it, independent of urban lot splits, gives a right to every property owner in an R, of an, of an R1 zone lot to develop two primary dwelling units on the property. So R1 usually allows one. Most often, R1 lots are already developed with one. SB 9 allows the property owner to develop that lot with a second one, a second primary dwelling lot. So think R2. Of course, if the lot is vacant at the moment, then they can develop it with two new dwellings, primary dwellings. If the lot is not split with an urban lot split, then the owner gets, has the right to the two primary dwellings under SB 9.
We're losing you, Todd. Todd, we're losing you.
Okay, I will look for a spot to pull over. Can you hear me at all now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. The last thing I was saying is that the other section of SB 9 that we focus on allows for two primary dwelling units on an, on an R1 lot. And if that lot is not the result of an urban lot split, then they get to have ADUs as well, under the ADU rules. The ADU statute, I mean, and the local ADU ordinance. So far, so good?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
As Flynn mentioned, yes, please.
When they can develop two primary units on an empty lot, does that require a lot split, or it can just be two units?
They are independent of each other. It does not require a lot split for someone to add a second unit or to develop a vacant lot with two units, two primary dwelling units. Great question. Any other questions at this point?
Lots of questions.
Hearing none.
We'll have lots of questions. We have actually, Commissioner Layen had her hand up, and Commissioner Irvin. So Commissioner Layen first?
I was just wondering about the logistics of that. Do you have to, if you have an existing single-family home and a second one is built, do they then have to separate the utilities and get separate meters for things?
Yes, that's something for the city to consider as it comes up with its objective standards. In fact, that is something that we considered when we came up with some sample objective standards, which is what you have before you for the urgency ordinance. We expect cities to, most likely. What's that?
It's in your ordinance.
It is.
Thank you.
Commissioner Irvin?
Um, with the lot split, the minimum you said was twelve thousand square feet?
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred.
Oh, twelve hundred. Okay. All right. Sorry about that.
No. That's a, that's a good distinction. I'm glad, I'm glad you brought that up.
So, so what you said, is there two different ways you can get to four units on a lot? One is you split the lot and you can have two primaries on each, each part of the split, or a junior or, or primary ADU. If you don't split the lots, you can put two houses on the lot, one single ownership, and each of those houses can have an ADU. Is that correct?
No, one of the houses gets an ADU and a junior ADU, and the other one gets nothing.
So if you do two houses, one gets both and the other gets nothing?
Yes, because in HCD's view, that's the Department of Housing and Community Development, on a lot with, on a single-family lot with two detached dwellings, two separate dwellings, one of them is a primary dwelling and the other one is something else. It, it doesn't really dovetail with SB 9. Well, we, we might see legislation come out later. But as of right now, those two detached dwellings, one of them will qualify for, will be considered a primary of the ADU law, and the other one will not. It will not be a primary dwelling for purposes of the ADU law, and it, and it won't get ADUs.
Okay, got it. Question for you. Palm Springs has no bus line that comes every fifteen minutes. We have no, we have some public transit, but none of it would qualify, I believe, under this. So can you talk a little bit about parking? And your ordinance said parking should be off-street. But is that your ordinance? What does the law say if you're, say you're, since it looks like in Palm Springs, we will end up with one parking space per unit?
Well, there, there are two different criteria that exempt a property from the one space per unit that the city is allowed to require, generally. So the default rule is the city gets to require one parking space per unit. There are two big exceptions to that in the state law. You've referred to the one of them, which is proximity to transit of a certain level. And the other one is proximity to a car-share vehicle. And by that, I mean a car-share vehicle location, a designated spot where people are picked up or dropped off by a car-share, like Uber or Lyft, or where they pick up or drop off an actual car, car-share vehicle, like a Zipcar. We don't see those as much anymore.
I don't think we have any car-share drop-offs.
Okay. Then, if that's true.
None that I'm aware of.
Okay. Then to the extent that the city doesn't have to deal with those exemptions and can impose the one space per unit, then there's nothing in the law that requires the city to accept an uncovered parking space, for example. As, as we have with ADUs, the state law has prevented cities from requiring the designated parking to be covered or in a garage. That's up to the city. The city can choose to do that or not. In terms of off-street or on-street, we're really focused on off-street here, and so is the state law. Because the public generally has a right to park on the street, unless there's a permit parking scheme, which is also something that cities, some cities, many cities do consider. Did I answer your question?
Uh, yes. Yeah, and it, that would be a choice, it would be one of the choices that we would make. It defaults to off-street, and then there's a choice as to whether or not the city wants it covered.
Certainly. And to be clear, at the end of the day, the state law does not require the city to adopt an ordinance at all. You could just be completely hands-off, and very likely you would find development under SB 9 happening that feels really inconsistent with the nature of your R1 neighborhoods. So hence the urgency to get something in place that at least can help direct the SB 9 development to be consistent and compatible based on the standards. Now, the draft that you have in front of you for urgency adoption and for adoption through the normal process in, in short order after that, to sort of reinforce it, really represents sort of the full range of tools that you have to exert local influence over SB 9 development. With time, you'll find that there might be some of those things that you want to revisit, or some that you just want to abandon. And you certainly can, but we're recommending to all of our clients to start with the full set of tools and then see which ones you like or find to be helpful, and then start making decisions about how you want to change them or maybe drop them.
As I looked at them, the ones I had questions about was the limitation to eight hundred square feet. This is, we're pretty much a city that wants more housing. I don't know that all of our neighborhoods want this in it, but limiting it to eight hundred feet sort of defeats the purpose where it can be built larger of getting any multifamily, you know, housing for families. And.
I hear you.
And I think that, if I had to guess, that's not the way we will go with it. The cities probably cares more about the design criteria and that it fits in, and probably the front yard setback in new, in new homes that come in like this, so that there's a possibility for both landscape and parking. Existing homes pretty much have spanned the width of the lots, even when the lots are big. So if we were doing some of this, it probably would be going into backyards, I think. And then there's the question of one-story, two-story, at least setting up some criteria for anything that's, if you have to do two-story, so that it's, it's consistent, or at least complementary to the existing buildings.
Chair Wermuth, that's actually a good discussion point for us. Todd, would you mind talking a little bit about height as it applies to the creation of additional dwellings on an existing lot? And some of the setback language and other exemptions under SB 9, if you would?
Certainly. Well, just generally, the state law allows the city to impose design, development standards that are objective, such as height limits and front yard and side and rear yard setbacks, block coverage and FAR and the whole, the whole gamut. Each of those, each of those standards, though, under the statute, must yield to the extent necessary to allow an eight hundred, well, two units to be on the property of at least eight hundred square feet each. So that eight hundred square feet comes from the statute. And it comes from the statute telling cities, the legislature telling cities that we can impose objective standards, but those standards have to yield to the extent necessary to allow at least two units of eight hundred square feet. Most cities want to start there. They want to start at eight hundred square feet. Well, we have these standards, we'll allow your standards, we'll allow your units to be eight hundred square feet, and our, and our standards won't prevent that. Some cities that want to consider larger units potentially in the future, particularly when, with families in mind, are kind of putting a pin in that idea and plan on revisiting that particular aspect of it in the first quarter as part of a larger policy discussion that they feel would take too much time right now to have. Because they recognize that it's pretty important to have some rules in place come January 1st, or as soon thereafter as we can get them. Otherwise, people will just be able to go through, well, will be able to develop second and third and fourth units on what was an original R1 lot. And it might not have the right look and feel for what you want.
Commissioner Marutti has his hand up.
So in the proposed ordinance, are you recommending that the maximum square footage be eight hundred square feet?
Yes.
So the minimum and max?
To start.
Eight hundred square feet.
No, the minimum is not eight hundred. The minimum in your draft ordinance, I believe, is five hundred, but you don't have to have a minimum at all. at all.
I thought that the SB9 had a minimum of 800.
No.
So SB9 allows a unit to be built at maybe 300 square feet?
Yes.
Okay, I must have misread this. And the idea of having...
The only...
Yes?
Sorry, the only floor that a dwelling has to deal with, if the city doesn't choose to impose a higher one, is the floor that exists in the Building Code and Health and Safety Code. There are two dovetailed provisions, one in the Uniform Building Code and the other in the Health and Safety Code, which together mean that a dwelling can be as little as 220 square feet. They call that an efficiency unit. In cities that have affirmatively opted to lower it even further, it can be as little as 150 square feet. And that might sound familiar to you if, from the ADU statute and the ADU ordinance, because there, the legislature expressly acknowledged that dwellings can be as little as an efficiency unit.
Why would you recommend 800 square feet as the maximum?
We recommend the 800 square feet as the maximum to any city that wants to see these units be affordable by design. That's, that's really the only way these are going to be affordable, is if they're affordable by design. And the state, both through the ADU law and through this law, has made a strong commitment to encouraging affordable housing. And I'm, in that sense, I mean affordable, not based on an income restrictive covenant, but based on how the market values smaller units.
Oh, that's interesting. I read differently in terms of the motivation for the 800 square feet. I thought it was because if a developer or any others want to come in and build something larger, they would be discouraged from that. You can say, well, that's, that's great, because it'll restrict it to just, you know, affordable housing, but on the other hand, it might make it hard for them to pencil it out if they wanted to do 1,000 square feet or something. I'm just wondering if the real, the, the actual motivation is really to make it more difficult to build, not necessarily to make it, to help it be affordable housing. But anyway, I guess that's a policy question that the council will have to address.
And those, those are policy questions, because if you want a three, if you want to do three-bedroom or four-bedroom units for families, you'll never fit them into 800 square feet.
So I think the motivation behind the 800 square feet isn't necessarily as being described, but that's again a policy question.
Yeah, it's a, it's a...
That's exactly right.
To speak to the policy...
It's a policy perspective.
To speak to the policy...
That's exactly... I'm sorry, Chair, go ahead.
Yeah, what I'm saying is that it is a policy question, and the question is, are there ways of dealing with it? 800 square feet if you have a two-bedroom, 1,000 or 1,100 square feet if you have a So those, those are kinds of questions that we might want to look at in terms of what can be built, because we have, we build very, very little. I mean, if you look at all of the affordability that's come in recently, it's all studios and one-bedrooms. And we're, you know, if we want families and kids in our schools, we'll need to do something different.
So let me just understand, is it our task, and I guess this is a question for Flynn, is the planning commission being asked to review the proposed ordinance and make comments about it? Or, I mean, this, this is a study session, but is the ultimate outcome that we will be recommending at this, today? Okay, so that we're just learning today, but at the next meeting, which will be in January?
Yeah. What we're doing today is just understanding what SB9 is, and allowing you all to ask your questions, since we have someone who's very knowledgeable on the topic here with us today. Ultimately, what we will be doing, and this is going to be after the urgency ordinance and the regular ordinance are adopted, is later this spring, hopefully starting in February, we as the planning commission will start looking at amendments we may want to make to that urgency ordinance. In that, the issue of square footage limitations, as we've just discussed right here, you as the planning commission may recommend that rather than 800 square feet, we might want to bump that up to encourage housing for families while not going to the point where it allows the creation of luxury dwellings on these second lots. That's not the purpose of the ordinance. It's to develop affordable housing, something that we dearly need here in Palm Springs. So the issue of things such as square footage limitations, objective design standards, we as the planning commission will look at those topics and make recommendations to the city council later this spring.
So is the urgency ordinance the proposed ordinance?
Yeah, it's the draft version that you have, that we just sent out this afternoon.
So then the city would be adopting 800 square feet and all the other recommendations of this? And then the second normal ordinance may be the same ordinance or already...
Yeah, the second one will be the same, and then the third, that we're doing later this spring, will have our tailored amendments in it.
And do we know that's what the council wants to do? They want that...
No, I don't know for certain, but having heard the council talk about housing policy, I'm fairly comfortable with the fact that they will want to make sure that our SB9 ordinance allows the development of housing, affordable housing for families.
Of course, we all want that. But I think there's some time bombs built into, into the proposed ordinance that they wouldn't like, but I guess we're gonna have to wait till the third ordinance to be able to make our recommendation.
Yeah, and, and I think we just need additional time to discuss that, both as the planning commission and the city council. And so that's why we're doing that later this spring.
But in the third ordinance, then we're, we're making our recommendations, and the council's voting on it the next day? Or they're just, you had...
No.
One meeting, and the city council is right after?
That's the second ordinance. Yeah.
Okay.
I realize this is very confusing, and I apologize.
It almost seems like we're trying, I don't understand why we're doing three. Why don't we just wait, take our time, understand what we really want to do from a policy perspective, and just pass that one ordinance, instead of having this quickie, let's get this in there because we don't want some developer to come in? I don't know, I just, it seems odd to me to do three.
Yeah, I, I think it's important to have protective measures in place at the beginning of this process, just in case, and so that way we can take our time and be comfortable in really molding it to what we want it to be.
If you had read through the ordinance, just thinking like my previous profession long ago as an attorney, I think that ordinance makes sense. It's all of the decision points in the ordinance that are interesting to me. But it's important to require a track map, and a tentative track, and some of the things that are in this, they are very protective. The ordinance makes a lot of sense, because the underlying statute is not as clear as this would be. So I was reading it for that purpose today, and then also reading it to look at the issues that I think are Palm Springs specific, that it probably, parking was one of them for me. How we deal with height if you have to get to 800 feet, if you have to go to a second story. I do think pretty early on, we should have something about setbacks on second stories. So there's some, there's some real issues in this, that having this is protective of the lot owners and, and the city, but I would like us to get as quickly as we can to clearing up the, the sort of housing affordability points that I think will be specific to Palm Springs. And one of them, for me, is the front yard setback, especially for new dwellings, because that actually allow, probably allows for parking. But Commissioner Irvin had his hand up.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just trying to wrap my, my head around everything. So, so initially tonight, we're just listening to the, the ordinance, getting guidance from the attorney. The next meeting that we have, we will iron out any details that we have seen and caught. And then in a third meeting, we'll implement things that are, are of need and specific to the city of Palm Springs. Is that correct?
That's essentially it, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And some of the questions, you know, that I think will be big questions, and that's a question for Flynn, do we have, it seems like we have enough R1 districts, that there's no reason to apply this to our two and our three districts? Because you can't build single-family homes in those districts, correct?
Well, you can't build single-family homes in multifamily districts. They are permitted uses. However, SB9 specifically addresses single-family districts. And so, and to answer your question, yes, we do have enough single-family districts where this could be helpful in terms of developing affordable housing in those areas.
And, and then, am I correct that, like, I live in an HOA. It specifically doesn't address HOAs, but my understanding is the city would have to permit applications that were appropriate applications, and then that would be an issue for the HOA board? Is that, is, am I right in that, Todd?
The question is, what effect does SB9 have on HOAs and CCNRs?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just assuming that if an application comes into the city for a home that's in an HOA, the city would have to process it.
After a matter, yes. So there's nothing in SB9 that affects HOAs and their CCNRs. Their CCNRs, if, remain in effect, if the CCNRs prohibit further subdivisions, or prohibit the development of a second unit on the property, they remain in effect, and they're binding and enforceable, and that's, that's the HOA's job to enforce them, or the neighbor, the members of the HOA to enforce them. That's not really a city job to enforce private covenants. However, the city can, so yes, in that sense, the city would very likely process the application anyway, though the city might want to see evidence that the applicant has already cleared it with the HOA. So that, that is a possibility.
Could that be addressed in the model ordinance, in the ordinance, the urgency ordinance that goes through?
No, I don't recommend it. Because remember, HOA enforcement and the like, that's not really city business, it doesn't need to be in the code. If the city wants to see evidence of that, I would just fold that into the application.
And that's objective?
Yes.
What about hillsides? It's not listed. It's one of our big housing types. It's actually something we generally look at individually because of the slopes and everything else. And this doesn't address hillsides, it only addresses high fire, but there may be issues on hillsides that would prevent second, third, and fourth units.
Certainly, and that's an important issue that Flynn and other staff members flagged for our office. The urgency ordinance that you see is a sample set of code amendments that were prepared with cities generally in mind. We didn't prepare it specifically for Palm Springs, so there's nothing in it that addresses hillsides, though that's certainly bound to be an important part of your robust policy discussion in the first quarter. In terms of what you could do by way of an objective standard, you could start with the default that on a slope of whatever degree, they're not, that portion of the lot is not available for the construction of dwellings, or it's only available for the construction of dwellings that meet certain criteria. You know, thinking about caissons and certain aspects of how they're engineered and the like. That's really, that's really going to be specific to Palm Springs, and we look forward to helping you implement whatever it is that you feel would be appropriate for hillside areas.
Flynn, shouldn't that be in the initial ordinance? Commissioner Maruzi, you've got your hand up again, but on that, shouldn't that be in our initial ordinance?
I'm not so certain.
If that's the recommendation... Sorry, Flynn, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, we would defer to the attorney on whether or not we took that in the initial ordinance.
You know, as, legally, could it be in the initial ordinance? It certainly could. But what we're dealing with now is an urgent need to get something on the books that gives the city a range of tools to help ensure that the development that will, could start happening on the 1st of January, or is reasonable in light of the context of the, of the neighborhood. And so to wait to craft and then agree on some hillside language, we think would delay the bill, and it would be better just to get, get it adopted so that the city has tools to work with, and then add that in. Unless somebody has the language already ready.
Chair, I, I would suggest that anytime we deal with hillsides in Palm Springs, it is so darn controversial, and we will wrestle with that for a long period of time. And although that might be appropriate and necessary for the final ordinance, for the urgency, the interim ordinance, I'm not sure that we have luxury of time over the holidays to be able to work out this kind of details.
And I guess that's a question for Rick. If our city, if the, our engineering department is here.
Yeah, I'm here.
So, did you hear the question?
Just a portion.
How long would it take to craft language for hillside development?
Oh, I don't know. I don't know that we've ever really been involved in crafting any language for hillside development. It's usually been a zoning item. Can certainly talk to the city engineer about it. My guess is we would use existing language and just try to tailor it to this situation.
Chair and Commissioner, if I may, this is Todd again. If there is a, a strong sense of discomfort with going forward promptly with the urgency ordinance without something to address hillsides, you might consider just adding a statement that on, in hillside areas, as defined by, you know, whatever grade, 30% grade or slope or whatever it is that is the, is the point of concern, in those areas, SB9 units may not be located, period. And then as you revisit the ordinance later, to see how you might want to loosen up the restrictions, you could consider what criteria you would be willing to see development in those hillside areas comply with. So that's, if you need something just to get it kind of covered somewhat, actually, it would be a lot of what, it would be covered considerably with a blanket ban on developing SB9 units in the hillside area. But we all have to keep in mind that with all of our objective standards, they do have to yield to allow the requisite two units of, you know, 800 square feet. So if you have a ban on building in the sloped areas, that could maybe address the immediate concern, and then you could come back... And then you could come back and figure out later how you might want to loosen that up.
That's a question for staff, I guess. Commissioner Maruzzi?
You know, I think a question that both the commission, planning commission and the city council want to have answered is, looking at Palm Springs, the R1 zone in Palm Springs, how many parcels would actually meet the criteria for an 800-square-foot dwelling with the recommended setbacks and all the other things in the ordinance? In my neighborhood, every single house has a pool. And there's, even though my parcel is 100 by 100, we can't, we could not squeeze an 800-square-foot house in there. So it may be that most neighborhoods in Palm Springs aren't, this wouldn't even apply to, and it may be a very small number ultimately, that it does. So is there some way that the staff could, you know, using, I don't know, GIS or whatever, determine how many lots actually have the ability to cram in an 800-square-foot based on the recommended setbacks?
Peter, we would have to go lot by lot and basically design each lot. And I'll tell you, we just do not have the staff to do that. That raises an interesting question, and maybe, Todd, you can talk about this. In terms of being able to fit an additional dwelling on a lot, how much demolition could be done to an existing residence?
Great question. So only 25% of the exterior walls of an existing residence can be demolished. So I think what the legislature anticipates is that if there's an existing dwelling on the site, the state does not want to see SB nine become an excuse for scraping existing housing. So they would, they can pull off one wall and then attach a second unit to that wall, or as will more likely happen in most cases, owners will just decide to build a second unit detached from the first. Perhaps on the other side of the pool, perhaps in place of the pool, owners are gonna have to make hard choices if they're interested in adding another unit to their property. Are they going to divide an already large home, like a 100 by 100 home? Are they going to add a second story to an existing home? Are they going to add on to the back of it? Are they gonna build another unit in the backyard? Is there enough room in the backyard? Would they have to maybe give up a pool in order to create room in the backyard? So those really aren't problems for the city to solve. In that sense, we don't have to determine how many lots have the potential for a second unit of 800 square feet because it will really depend on the owners. They will have to make those decisions about whether or not they want to cut up their existing house, go up the second story, take out the pool. It's just, we can't anticipate that.
That raises two more questions for me. The 40, 60 lot split, you might have features in Palm Springs houses that people don't want, they might have a large enough lot that they could put a second unit or split it, but want to share some of the features? And this doesn't look like that allows that to happen.
If the lots are split, they need to be independent under the sample code that you have. Certainly, if a community like Palm Springs wanted to loosen that, it could later.
Could you explain, I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
Could you explain, under setbacks, I'm looking at the proposed ordinance, for, it says, under exceptions, 800 square feet or foot side and rear, the setbacks imposed by the underlying zone must deal to the degree necessary to avoid physically precluding the construction of up to two units on the lot, or, anyway, go on. But it says, but in no event may any structure be less than four feet from a side or rear property. How does that relate, I guess it's a question for staff, how does that relate to our current setbacks required for an ADU or something like that? Is four feet, what, do we have four, is that what ours is?
Flynn, if you don't mind, I can chime in.
Oh, go ahead, Todd.
So Commissioner, the ADU laws, you probably know, is very clear and very strict about what cities can impose in terms of side and rear setbacks. It says that when it comes to ADUs, a city may not impose any setback side and rear on that ADU any greater than four feet. So the city has, the city has very little choice there.
What is, I'm just curious. For our city, for ADUs?
What is that?
No, I'm asking a question of our staff.
So for ADUs, it is four feet at the side and the rear.
Okay, so that is the third ordinance.
Yeah, for ADUs.
Okay, so this doesn't affect that in any way, this proposed ordinance. Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
I was just gonna finish the thought that under SB nine, it's, that is not the rule. We're not limited to a four-foot side and rear setback. We can impose our normal ones. Of course, those normal ones have to yield to allow, like all of our other objective standards have to yield, as necessary to allow a two-unit or a second unit at 800 square feet. But the state law here, under SB nine, says that in that setback having to yield, it never has to yield below four feet. So at the end of the day, the city can at least impose a four-foot setback more if that still allows someone to develop the 800-square-foot unit.
Just to note that Commissioner Elaine has left. She had a family matter, so she's left the call.
Do we need to have a quorum just to continue this session?
No, because this is a study session and no formal action is taken. We do not need to have a quorum. However, with our current membership of six members, we do have half of the planning commission in attendance.
That is true. Okay, thank you.
I like the way you wrote that portion of the draft ordinance. It's, it looked to me like we only had to yield it if we had a large enough lot. They would do normal setbacks. I'm assuming normal setbacks are either what's in the code or what's in the PD? Because some of our single-family housing is in PD developments, right?
Yes, correct.
So that, that makes sense, so that, you know, and eventually, if we allow more space, we can work with that. The question for you, if we don't, I don't know how many of our districts allow second stories. Do you know, Flynn, so Todd was mentioning that we would allow a second story to allow a second unit in a current house. That may be, take, I mean, just thinking about that structurally, adding a second story is probably not gonna be easy with the way the loads were set up and everything to put a second story on a one-story house without drastically changing the first story. But do we have to do that? Is that something, if it's not new, do we have to allow two stories?
Chair and Commissioner, Flynn, would you like me to answer that?
Yeah, I'll let you go ahead and take that, Todd.
Chair and Commissioner, that's a great question. And no, the city does not have to allow second stories. In fact, the sample code amendments that you, that will go before the council for urgency adoption, limit units built under SB nine to being 16 feet above grade. Now, we anticipate these being on the ground, not a second story. The only exception to that is where there's a lot that's so small that you can't, you just can't fit two 800-square-foot units on the ground. And now, I'm a lawyer, but even I can do the math that a 1,200-square-foot lot isn't big enough to handle two 800-square-foot units on the ground. So in that rare case, where the lot is so small that you can't fit the two units on the ground, then the city would have to consider allowing them to go up the second story. But that really only comes into play with lots that are, oh, I don't know, 2,000 square feet or smaller, probably 2,400 square feet if they're gonna split them into resulting lots. And I suspect that you have few, if any, lots that are legally subdivided in the city and that are that small.
We might have, we might have in some of the PDs. We had a couple of small planned developments, but they probably have HOAs. I would assume, I would assume that something like Icon would have an HOA. That, that's the one that I can think of that's probably got the smallest lots.
Correct. And with the limitation on demolition of the existing residents, it's unlikely that they would be able to do either a second unit or an urban lot split. So the number of lots that we have in the city of Palm Springs that are that small is very few. Most of our lots are in the 10,000-square-foot range. And so it's unlikely that we would see a situation where we would have to allow a second story just based on our existing inventory of single-family lots.
Chair Wilmot?
Yes.
Was your question regarding parking answered?
I think my question regarding parking, no. In terms of, the draft ordinance doesn't require covered parking. And it's pretty clear to me that, given we don't have rideshare drop-offs or any transit that's as rapid as once every 15 minutes, that any, that at least you'd have to put in one parking space per, per unit.
Okay, and it doesn't have to be covered? It does not.
The draft ordinance doesn't say covered, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest that we did that.
I agree with you, I agree with you. I just wanted to make sure, because I was trying to read through this parking section. I wasn't sure if that was what we were trying to say, but it is. Good, thank you.
It looks to, and Commissioner Irvin has a comment on that. You're muted.
Not specifically on that, but I was just wondering if Todd was done with his presentation, or is there anything else that needs to be presented by Todd?
Thank you. No, I'm done presenting. I have been in question and answer mode for a while.
Madam Chair, Mr. Menharris has a question.
Oh, please.
I just wanted to add a little bit more to Maruzzi's comment about how many lots would actually be able to accommodate something like this, and whether or not we have the ability to give that number. I just wanted to add something to that. And the amount of site plans that I see, because I see all the applications from planning and from building for all the additions and remodels and garage additions and ADUs, I have to say that a good portion of the lots that are developed in town, the houses are already situated almost in dead center of the lots. And so by trying to get, trying to meet that 60-40 split is going to be very, very tough. It's going to be a case-by-case basis. It's not gonna be just a giant free-for-all. That is gonna be a very, very specific property that's gonna be able to meet those conditions. So I just wanted to kind of add that, because I do see a lot of projects.
And I appreciate you saying that, because I think ultimately, when the public starts paying attention to this, the council will probably want to, however you want to word it, reassure them that most likely, their neighborhood isn't gonna be able to accommodate many of these, for good and for bad. And so if people start raising hell, oh, excuse me, cane about the idea that, oh my God, our neighborhood's gonna be overwhelmed with, you know, these other units and so on and so forth, you know, most likely, they'll, well, we'll take a look at your neighborhood, I don't know, anyhow. I think a really important thing that the press will probably want to jump on through as well.
It's tough looking at these, and it's tough even looking at just general ADUs that we're currently processing. We're processing quite a few. And it's even tougher the ADUs, even though they do not have discretionary review, but we do look at pad heights to make sure that we're not super elevating pads. We would need to still kind of do that for this, just to make sure that they can meet sewer requirements, sewer flow requirements. So this, these are not going to be easy. Hey, here's my application, I want to do a lot split, and I check all the boxes. It's, it's gonna be tough.
For ADUs, does it, is a separate driveway required where one can park a car? Or can they, they can just walk around the side of the existing?
Yeah, the new ordinance does not require them to have a separate driveway.
So where would the, so the parking, if it's one space per unit, so the main house, let's call it the front house, would have, have to have one space for themselves? And they would also have to make room for another? Because you can't, if you can't get your car around to the back where the other ADU is, you need to have it in the front.
Yeah, you'd need to fit it somewhere on the side.
Most likely, where the other house is in front of it.
What the draft ordinance said was there's a preference for both units, both lots or both units, to have street access, to be adjacent to a street. And that makes sense, I think, for new, my sense is a lot of this could be new lots that are developed. Not, not lots that are in existence, that they would probably, I mean, my lot, if I wanted to do it, would be big enough if somebody could walk up the side yard where the trash is and access it, it would be large enough to put another unit in the back if I took a hole. I don't know that it would be large enough to split it.
By the way, does-
Chair and Commissioner, this is Todd again. May I add a little color to that?
Yeah.
So SB nine, certainly the lot splits are probably going to be more complicated than just adding a second unit to an existing lot. And, but, the legislature has contemplated the scenario that you've all described, where a lot of the lots are already developed with a substantial dwelling in the middle of the property. The law says that the city must allow a lot split, even if it goes under an existing structure, such that, now, for that to work, that structure would have to be then modified to, 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 what's the word I want to look for? To comply with building code standards for having two dwellings share a wall. So they would, they would have to impose a wall through the middle of the house if they wanted to run the property line back under the middle of the house. They could. They'd have to create a wall that's fire-rated and all the stuff that the building official will want to see for a division between two separate dwellings. And then they'll have to modify at least one half to include a kitchen and, you know, the necessary sanitation facilities and the like. So the legislature does contemplate lot splits that actually split a house into a duplex. Or not, yeah, well, I guess there would be a duplex after a manner. Two units that touch each other right at the property line. So that is a possibility.
Do, do, do SB nine and SB 10 apply to tribal land?
Oh, that's a great question. And the first one that I've heard of, or the first time I've heard it.
tribal land.
Let me, yeah, let me jump in there. Per the contract or the agreement that we have with the tribe, tribal trust land is excluded from the city's zoning regulations. However, allotted trust land is subject to the city's zoning ordinance. So consequently, with our adoption of these regulations, it would be permissible there, I would imagine. And Mr. Priest, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, you're correct. There are some exceptions in the agreement.
Yes, you're correct. There are some exceptions in the agreement where perhaps applying the zoning code conflicts with the terms of a federal lease or with federal law. But other than that, you are correct. The local zoning code would apply. I would also note that on allotted land, there is a right to appeal the decision of the city on zoning matters to the tribal council ultimately.
But would this tribal council ultimately have to follow SB nine? We don't know. Okay. I mean, the thing is, I understand about LRTs, but unlike Section 14, much of the land is owned by the tribe and a lot of the vacant land in Section 14.
Right? Is multifamily and not single family.
True enough. I mean, I'm just curious. You know, drive around, you see empty lots. Where are they? Mostly they're in tribal land.
Chair and and Commissioner, if I may, this is Todd again. There just to be clear, there is nothing in SB nine that would require that would subject SB nine or protect SB nine from tribal regulation any differently than your normal zoning. This is, for all intents and purposes, just another part of your zoning code and your subdivision code. And to the extent that your zoning applies at all in in tribal territory, it'll apply the same way to SB nine. There's no extra special treatment here.
So let me go back to hillsides. Right now, we treat hillsides and properties on major corridors as special and they get they're reviewed individually because of, one, because of hillsides and, two, the major corridors. Does that mean there would be no review? No normal review of any any single-family dwelling? Or only ones?
That depends on the nature of the review. I I don't know what those individual reviews are for. I suspect that they are discretionary based on, say, design or something.
Let me see if I can jump in and answer that. So in response to that question, Chair, where there is an existing house on a major thoroughfare or in a hillside area, if they were to do a lot split or build a second unit, that would have to be a ministerial review. However, if it's an undeveloped parcel on a major thoroughfare or a hillside area, it would still be subject to our discretionary review through the Architectural Review Committee.
Okay. And is it SB nine or SB 10 that allows the building of a second unit? So you say if you did us, you could do a lot split this way with an easement over a sidewalk way and a house in the back of and the second lot in the back of a house? If the if you have an existing house that.
Chair, if I understand your question correctly, you're asking, is it SB nine or SB 10 that allows for the development of a second house behind an existing house?
Yes.
It's SB nine.
It's SB.
You know, I didn't mention SB 10. And maybe I should have to Commissioner Irving's question, maybe I wasn't done with my presentation. I'll just say I don't need to say much about SB 10. It's just it's an extra tool that's available to the city if the city wants to pick it up. What it does is it gives the city a way to upzone property to as much as 10 dwelling units per lot and skip sequo. And it's purely optional. The city has to, if it wants to avail itself of that tool, the city has to pass an ordinance giving itself permission to do so. And once it passes an ordinance, then it may do so after that point. It may, after that authorizing stat ordinance, it may then choose to upzone certain properties. Again, this is purely optional. And it will, it's kind of on the back burner for a lot of cities because most cities are really focused on SB nine since that's compulsory.
SB 10 might be very attractive to us, especially for one of the neighborhoods in the city. And it might be good to give the city the authority to do that. Our on the northern part of the city, one of the neighborhoods is asked to be able to upzone.
And Madam Chair, what I would recommend is that we consider that as part of our third ordinance, if you will, later this spring, that we bring that together as a package to the city council.
A question for you. The draft ordinance doesn't cover lot coverage or open space, but it makes sense to put something in there. Have you thought about that, Flynn?
Yes, I think we would want to address that as part of the third ordinance.
Only the third ordinance, so you would leave that out of the first and second?
Yeah, I'm comfortable leaving it out of the first and second, but we can address it if we want to make modifications to it in the third. And the work will discuss that.
And I was just going to say that that Chair, the 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 code amendments that BBK provided included placeholders for lot coverage and FAR and open space. But again, they were just placeholders. And there hasn't been a policy discussion around what those numbers should be if if it makes sense to have them. So we, after talking about it with staff, we thought we'll just pull out those placeholders for now and and fold it back in if appropriate during that third that third ordinance, the the third iteration, which will reflect all the kind of bespoke policy concerns of the city.
Then I guess the the second question was number nine for me. You have each resulting lot must must enjoy the public right-of-way. And each resulting lot must have frontage on the public right-of-way at least of 12.5 feet. Those are those are standards that are placeholder standards?
The 12.5 is because that's about as narrow as you can get according to my public works friends or our public works friends and have a driveway sufficiently wide for a car. And so some cities have, at the outset, said, no, that's not wide enough. We want it to be 15 feet. Or I did one two nights ago where the the town wanted to make it 50 feet because their minimum lot width is 100, so they figured that would work. That that's a placeholder, but it's a placeholder with a purpose. I wouldn't go any smaller than that. You can certainly go bigger than that. And again, that placeholder is probably good enough until you have the more robust policy discussion, unless you just are not comfortable with it right now.
I have a question about, I don't understand it. Each resulting lot must have frontage on the public right-of-way of at least 12 and a half feet. What what does that mean?
Well, you're familiar with flag lots, right?
Well, let's say an ADU, ADU that's in the back. And we had discussed the idea that, you know, that it had to have some access to the ADU, but it could be just a very narrow walkway on the side of the existing house. But you're saying it has to be 12 and a half feet?
Well, you're talking about ADUs. I'm talking about an urban lot split where we're actually creating two new lots.
So what this second?
And when it comes to.
The second lot would be behind the existing lot.
But it would need to have act, it would need to join the front or the the public right-of-way so that it has independent access.
And when you're talking.
And and that access needs. Sorry, go ahead.
So that we're not talking about ADUs or anything else in this particular case. For lot access is strictly, the section called lot access is only referring to lot splits.
Yes.
Okay, I'm trying to see, does it say that somewhere? That it only applies to lots with, or is that just by logic that's the only it could mean?
It's the only thing it could mean.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, and and ADUs are subject to their own rules. But, you know, with all this talk about SB nine and second units, it's easy. It's easy to lose sight of the fact that there's a robust ADU law sitting off on the side with its with a local ordinance that complies with that. And and so access to that ADU is really governed by that ADU statute and ordinance. It's not an SB nine issue.
And it's not a lot split either, ADU.
Correct. ADU access is not a lot split issue.
Okay.
Mr. Menharris?
Yes, I wanted to add to Mr. Maruzzi's question there. The reason, one of the reasons too, and I don't know if Todd talked about this or not, for having that street access is, you know, these are parcel maps, individual parcel maps that are going to have to be done, and they have to follow the Subdivision Map Act, which means it's illegal to create a landlocked parcel. So if you don't have street frontage by either a flag lot or some kind of an easement giving them legal access, then we're creating a landlocked parcel, which is goes against the map act.
Okay, that makes sense.
You're a very thoughtful commission. I've enjoyed all these questions. Do you have any more?
I'm sure we do.
You know, there was something, okay, in your summary that we received previously, one of the bullet points says revisit.
Hold on, may I stop you there, please?
Sure.
Are you referring to, Flynn, is this the confidential memo that we shared with the city?
Yeah, I guess it is.
Okay, then we're not going to talk about that in open session, please.
Okay, that's fine. Well, let me ask a more general question.
Before you go, I just want to note that Commissioner, that Vice Chair Roberts has joined us.
Hi, everybody.
So I have a more general question. It has to do with infrastructure needs. Is there any discussion in the proposed ordinance about infrastructure?
That's a great question. For better or for worse, in the legislature's attempt to make to facilitate the development of housing, it has prohibited cities from requiring off-site improvements and infrastructure as part of this. So so no, there's not.
Okay.
However, I will say this. The law does not preclude the city from imposing its development impact fees, which is some of which we know are meant to mitigate impacts on infrastructure. So these units, like all units, will contribute financially toward infrastructure issues that they create. But we will not be able to require them to dedicate any property or to construct any off-site improvements.
Okay, good. Thank you.
But we can't, it said that the city could impose fees. Is the understanding that this ordinance would give staff the ability to determine what the fees should be in terms of the, I'm assuming it will take staff time to process these and we can charge fees commensurate with the amount of staff time.
Certainly, we will. Yes, the city, the city, Madam Chair, will follow the laws that govern setting fees generally. The city, of course, can't make any money. It's not supposed to be a profit center. But the city can make reasonable assumptions about how much staff time it takes to process and the like. And and based on those reasonable assumptions, impose a fee through the normal process. There's nothing special that needs to happen here.
Okay, so the language in the urgency ordinance is broad enough to allow the city to determine what the fees should be?
Yes, the city can and the city should.
And without it being in the ordinance that this is what the fee will be?
That's exactly right. And we we generally do not codify our fees. As you probably already know, the the fees are usually either either the council authorizes a director to establish the fees as long as it's a reasonable basis, or as more as as is more common, the fees are proposed by staff and approved by resolution by the council.
And that's how we do it here, is city council would approve any amendments or changes to our fee schedule.
So the last question I have, and I don't know if Commissioner Roberts, you've just walked in, if you have questions on this that you you want to ask before I ask another question?
Go ahead. I'm just I'm just catching up with you. I read the material. Let me catch up with you a little bit.
Mine, my question has to do with the applicants and some some interest in an interesting question. If we have an individual applicant coming in, it has to be the property owner, it has to be a natural human being. It can't, it 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 wouldn't be, say, a corporation or a trust that has gone, there was, there have been articles today about trusts that have gone out and bought thousands and hundreds of thousands of homes which then they rent out again. So it couldn't be one of those. It would have to be the homeowner?
Yes, Madam Chair, that's exactly right. The the proposed ordinance precludes any REIT, any real estate investment trust or any other form of corporate ownership from availing itself of the benefits of SB nine because, among other reasons, SB nine requires, well, the ordinance under SB nine requires owner occupancy.
And the owner occupancy is going to be pretty hard to. I mean, that would take a full staff person at the city confirming that. So that's.
Correct. In terms of ongoing compliance, you're you're absolutely right. That's kind of a code enforcement headache. But as with most code enforcement issues, we, cities generally respond or their enforcement is more complaint-based than proactive in terms of identifying violations. And certainly at the outset, when someone is applying for an SB nine approval, they would have to demonstrate compliance.
And.
Go ahead, Kathy. I have questions on that when you're done.
Well, I, no, go, you've got questions on that. Go ahead because mine will go slightly off this.
And I still have questions as well.
I'll just throw this in on top of Kathy's question. So I, that was a concern of mine. The enforcement aspect of this seemed like a real concern. You know, it's hard enough for us to keep track of vacation rental owners and the other things that we have to enforce on. But and as you and as you said, very often enforcement is is complaint-based, but I don't know what the complaint would be. You know, a neighbor wouldn't necessarily know who the homeowner is or who the property owner is because so often things are rented out to begin with, which is completely legal. So I see this as a potential for real problems and violation. And I'm wondering how much latitude we have to really enforce it, like requiring proof of, I don't know, primary address for tax purposes or, I don't know, I I don't know. It to me, it requires something that it requires a real enforcement meeting specifically for this because I can see where this could create big problems, where we just have people buying things up, cutting them in half, doing multi-housing and not and not respecting the intent of this ordinance whatsoever.
Commissioner, that you're right to be concerned. And we thought of that too as we were drafting the ordinance. And you'll see on further readings that under both provisions, both the urban lot split and the second unit provisions, there there's a statement about how the city is authorized to require evidence demonstrating compliance. And we just leave it at that in the code. And then I actually, it actually says a little bit more than that as examples. But that's all we really need in the code because then when in the application, we can have a robust list of of things that they need to provide as evidence of that they really are occupying the property. And we can ask for a number of things in our enforcement effort. And as for whether or not you'll learn about it, don't underestimate the 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 interest of a neighbor when the lot next door is being split and three more houses are being developed where there was one. They tend to know who the owner is and they tend to know whether the owner lives there or not. And if the public knows that the owner has to live there for that to happen, they will be, they're, they're very likely to let the city know.
You know, in a perfect world, I think you're right. I'd be very interested in the examples of what we can use for enforcement. But again, in neighborhoods where you have thirty, up to thirty percent vacation rental ownership, nobody knows who owns what anymore. And so it's not like, you know, leave it to Beaver and the neighbors are down the street. Our neighborhoods are very different now. So anyway, I'll leave it that I have major concerns on enforcement. Mine, other questions have to do with some of the architecture criteria, but I'll do that after Peter.
Actually, that was what I was going to ask about, which is architecture. I just wanted to ask a general question of staff. Are you comfortable with the wording of this draft ordinance as relates to architecture?
We're comfortable with this version going forward with the understanding that we're going to come back later with objective standards. So yes.
Okay.
I'm, I'm going to throw in that I'm not as comfortable with this criteria. It seems cookie cutter and odd. And I think, you know, from, from my read, it wants to create identical little houses or mini, mini me versions of the houses that exist, which we may not want it to replicate or duplicate.
Jerry, you need to explain to Jerry about the process we're going through and how this is not going to be the one we're going to ultimately live with.
Well, okay.
Yeah, we was very confusing this. We had to have it explained to us. Who wants to just explain it quickly about the three steps we have to go through here?
So Commissioner Vice Chair Roberts, what we're going to be doing is the city is going to be adopting an urgency ordinance. City council will do that on January the thirteenth. We'll follow up with version two of the ordinance, which is essentially the urgency ordinance, going through the regular public hearing process on January the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. We're going to assemble a work group of the planning commission to look at objective design standards. And that work group will meet in February and March with the idea that we will then amend the ordinance approximately in April with enhanced standards and looking at modifications to certain things like the square footage limitation, lot coverage and things like that, and parking requirements. Issues that would be specific to our neighborhoods and what is important to us relative to the development of affordable housing.
So we have a lot more latitude in this.
We, we will have more latitude.
Okay, now I feel like Rosanna, Rosanna Danna. And I'm done.
The, the, I think the one reason to have the cookie cutter language they have there is just so that we don't end up with, in the short interim, a trailer, a shed, that you had, that for the first six months, that there's some, some control on something absolutely, completely out of place being put in until we get that language.
Okay.
Chair, that's absolutely right. This is Todd again. That is, that is the intent with which we drafted it, because keep in mind, we were drafting this for cities up and down the state as their urgency ordinance, to give them a full set of tools, sort of the interim ordinance, so that they're not over a barrel come January first, knowing that most cities will want to revisit it after a robust policy discussion in the first or second quarter. So it really is just to keep the lid on for the time being, so that somebody doesn't try to pop a Quonset hut behind their mid-century house in Palm Springs.
I love Quonset huts.
I was just going to say, in Palm Springs, a Quonset hut might be a protected iconic Quonset hut.
I spoke too soon. I'm an architecture nerd, and I just, that didn't even enter my radar. I should have thought of that.
Well, we're being silly, but the, but the, but the concern, the real concern here is making somebody do a Quonset hut replica based on the criteria that's in there, in the, in the ordinance now. That's what scared me, is that we were going to have basically, you know, Barbie Fun House replicas, you know?
Right. And to be honest, I don't think that's going to be much of an issue, because you're so on top of it as a staff and a, and a commission and council. There's going to be a lot of interest in revisiting that interim same, same standard before, you're not going to wait a year or two. You're going to come to it in the next few months, and you'll have something that's bespoke for your city and will work well.
So my question, and the question I was going to ask goes in a different direction. We're going to have new projects coming to us that haven't been developed yet. Should we be looking at them for their, should we also look at their potential for SB nine development when something comes in to make sure that that, and not assume that it's going to be built the way it comes in because it could change? Does that make sense?
That's a great question. It does. So if I could just restate it to make sure I understand. Well, let me preface it with a comment. The, if it's already zoned R1, or whatever the Palm Springs equivalent is, it's a foregone conclusion, right? You're not going to ever be looking at an SB, at a project, wondering if, about SB nine potential, because that SB nine potential is already there. Nobody's going to come to you for a project in R1 anymore. I don't anticipate that. But if you're, what you're looking at is a proposal to change some land to R1, then yes, you will very likely be considering not just its potential for those. Well, for example, if somebody says, I've got some commercial land and I want to rezone it R1 for a one hundred home subdivision. Well, savvy cities don't just look at that as a one hundred home subdivision anymore. They look at that as a one hundred home subdivision with the potential for three hundred units overall under the ADU law, because every one of those one hundred homes could have a junior ADU and an ADU. Or now, under SB nine, they'll be looking at it as four hundred units overall, because they can have two primary dwellings per lot, plus a junior ADU and an ADU. So, yes, and, and that might, we're, we're going to see this have ripples out into kind of the underlying land use approvals, like the, the big subdivision map or the big rezone from commercial to R1. And the, and the sequo work that's done with that will very likely have to kind of bloom or, or expand to contemplate not just the one hundred proposed homes, but the four hundred potential homes.
So, and that, I think that's, that's a staff nightmare. We have to look at a lure in January with the potential for a hundred homes as opposed to twenty-six. I mean, that's an example.
It's a tough example, based on their site plan.
What's up, Flynn?
It would be tough for them to do that based on the configuration of their site plan, trying to do a sixty forty lot split with the footprint of the dwellings as proposed.
Okay. And we can turn down any lot split, our staff, the director can turn down any lot split that would be a sixty-one thirty-nine?
Yes.
So anything that didn't fit those dimensions is automatically out?
Yes.
But they could split the house in half?
Yes.
Oh, my God. I wish you hadn't said yes.
Talking about a duplex. We gave this example earlier, and see that somebody could put a wall up, you know, and turn the house into a duplex.
They can do that, yes.
They kind of do that already, can't they?
I don't know.
I mean, wouldn't that just be?
Through the ADU law, yes.
Yeah, that would be a second rental, that would be an ancillary rental unit, right?
Yes, it could be.
Could also be a lot split.
This sounds pregnant with possibilities and nightmares to me.
Well, you know, I, I think that's an accurate description, because, you know, we all want to help with housing. And with the best of intentions, the legislature acts. But, you know, how many of us really understand all the repercussions from our, our best intended efforts? We're going to all be discovering those opportunities and nightmares together. Though, I'll just add one more to the mix for staff. And that's that SB nine essentially puts every city in the state in the business of keeping two ledgers for housing, because once a lot undergoes some benefit under SB nine, it is limited in what can happen to it after that. For example, once it undergoes an urban lot split under SB nine, it can never undergo an urban lot split again. So cities are kind of waking up to the reality that I'm going to have to keep a list of all the cities or of all the lots in the, in the city that have either gotten a second unit or an urban lot split under SB nine. And I just need to check that every time I get an application for an SB nine project to make sure that they haven't already taken advantage of it.
And if the city makes a mistake, what's the law?
Oh, we'll hear about it, I'm sure. No, there, there's not, there's not a built-in sledgehammer. But as a practical matter, if, if a city were stubborn and refused to comply with the law, of course, HCD takes an interest in cities that are stubborn like that. And HCD has a free attorney and the Attorney General of the State of California. And that city usually hears about it.
Was in one of those cities before on the planning commission. We heard a lot. So coming this up, I just want to throw something out. I think that this is very interesting. It's been very helpful. The choices you made make sense for an initial ordinance. I think you've got a sense of where we want to go later in terms of some support for family housing and paying attention to the architecture and paying attention to the hillsides. I probably would recommend that you put something in on the hillsides now. I don't know. That's up to staff as to whether you agree with that. And just when this goes to council, I'd like a recommendation that we look at SB ten, because that could, that could be really helpful with the neighborhoods that have asked for upzoning. So that we, and for the Vice Chair, SB ten allows a tool for cities to easily upzone neighborhoods if they want to. And we've had some of those requests recently with the housing ordinance or the housing element that we were doing. So those, I, I don't know anything else that we can add on it. I think hillsides are special for us. And, um, and just knowing that there's a concern here that we use this in a way that supports more housing, more affordable housing.
I'd like to request that I be included in the subcommittee when you form it.
Let me, we don't have Commissioner Hirschbein right here. What I'd like to do is go through everybody and see who would like to do it before I set who's going to be on the committee.
And Madam Chair, what I'd recommend is that we discuss putting the committee together on January the twenty-sixth.
And I'll try and let the two commissioners that aren't here know that that's something we're looking at doing.
And one of the things to keep in mind is we do have another subcommittee, the TREES subcommittee, that we're putting together. I just want to make sure there isn't too much overlap, because we will probably have those two subcommittees working around the same time. So I just want to make sure that we're careful in terms of the extracurricular assignments that we give you as planning commission members.
Amen, Flynn.
Um, and so, does anybody have any other summary comments before we leave this topic? There being none. Thank you so much, Todd.
You're very welcome, and thank you all for, for the good conversation. Flynn, we'll be in touch.
Wonderful. Thanks.
Okay, moving right along to our second item.
I was going to say, that was extremely helpful. I appreciate that, that we were able to do that and having someone who's such an expert. I mean, Todd was amazing in terms of his understanding of every aspect of this, and any question we asked, he was able to answer.
We are truly appreciative to Todd for providing us the background and information on that. We as staff would not have been able to handle this by ourselves. So again, we appreciate that.
I want to say that our attorney, Mr. Priest, couldn't have handled it. But, you know, everybody has to specialize somewhat.
Oh, Mr. Priest is busy with districts right now.
I appreciate the compliment from the commission. However, Todd's always my first call on these questions.
Okay, general plan, land use density and allowing flexibilities for housing. Staff report, please, or staff setting the discussion for us.
Yeah, so, good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is kind of a follow-up of the conversation we started back in October relative to a proposed zone text amendment. So there's really two items that we want to discuss, and let me pull up my PowerPoint.
Oh, hold on one second before you, Commissioner Irvin is going to have to leave. Is that correct? Do you have comments on both of these or either of these before you leave?
I've got about ten or fifteen minutes, so I guess I'll just look at the presentation and then, if I have anything, I'll, I'll let you guys know.
Okay, thank you.
I'll try and go quickly here. So there's two items of discussion today. The hotel to apartment conversions, which we introduced back in October and had a discussion on, which is an item that we've been continuing until we were able to resolve the general plan issues. And then the second matter is relative to lowering the minimum density threshold for mixed-use projects. And I have some examples here, some that we have developed in the city that we've kind of surveyed as to what projects we thought were good mixed-use projects and where their densities fall relative to their lot sizes and how they comply with the general plan. So the first topic, hotel to apartment conversions. As you know, the city has a lot of apartments and hotels that were developed between nineteen thirty and nineteen sixty. The city didn't adopt a general plan until nineteen sixty-six. And we've been, we've done comprehensive updates to that general plan in nineteen seventy-four, nineteen ninety-three, and most recently in two thousand and seven. Many of the hotels or apartments that we had built in the middle of last century do not conform to current land use densities, either due to changes in density for their classification or the addition of new land use classifications with the comprehensive updates. So some examples that we have here for a mixed-use designation is a property at twenty-five twenty-five North Palm Canyon Drive. This was built in the, in the fifties as an apartment with, well, as a building that had apartments and hotel units together. They had subsequent add-ons, and currently there are eighteen hotel units on a half-acre lot. This would, currently under the mixed-use designation, only permit seven units, which, under the mixed-use classification, is, you know, no more than fifteen units to the acre. So currently, this property would be inconsistent with the mixed-use designation. Another property here on Caillou Pala Fiero was built in nineteen sixty as nine apartments. They did an addition in nineteen seventy-six with nine, or six for two. They did an addition in nineteen seventy six with nine or six hotel rooms. So presently, there are a total of sixteen units on a three quarter acre lot. It's part of the small hotel land use designation in the general plan, which allows ten dwelling units per acre. And this was a new classification that the city added in two thousand and seven. So under the current density that's permitted, they would get no more than seven units to be for the three quarter acre lot that it sits on. So it's, you know, the current density is less, less than half of what's currently built on the property. Another example of with the introduction of the small hotel land use designation in the two thousand and seven general plan is a property at five 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 Long Sands Drive. This site was developed in nineteen forty six, initially with four apartments. Then they've done eight places over time in the mid, middle of the century. So there's a total of twenty eight hotel units currently on just about an acre. So as you can see, with this new classification, this property is severely hampered by what the current general plan allows. And it would only permit five apartment buildings, excuse me, five apartment units within this designation. So two of these examples are hotels that were previously paying hotel T O T and have at some point stopped paying T O T. So there is potential that two of the properties might have a desire to convert to residential. So that may be a possibility in the future. So as we introduced back in October, this kind of dilemma that we've run into is that we have several properties developed in the middle of last century. So we introduced an ordinance to allow a conversion of these properties back to apartment units by a conditional use permit. We also suggested accompanying that ordinance with a general plan amendment to address nonconforming density. So as a summary of that recommendation, it's any multifamily structure that is a hotel motel or other form of transient lodging, but which was originally constructed as an apartment, can revert to an apartment use and operate the same number of units as originally approved is the suggested language that we would consider if the commission feels that this is an appropriate change to the general plan. As we said, as I said, the examples, I think it would make sense to allow something like this just so that we can not preclude properties that are existing from converting to apartments and allow for additional hotel units or, excuse me, additional multifamily units where hotels may be currently operating. So that's the first topic.
Do we want to take them one by one?
Yeah, we can take them one by one.
Comments on this? Commissioner Maruzzi and then Commissioner Roberts.
I mean, this all seems to be.
Oh, Commissioner, hold on, Commissioner Irvin, do you have comments on this first since you have to leave?
No, I do not.
Commissioner Maruzzi.
And this all seems to make logical sense. Is there anything that, I mean, any gotchas in here? Otherwise, I don't see why we wouldn't agree to this, maybe not understanding.
I think the point is really just to kind of clean up, make sure we're in compliance with the general plan. And the CUP is really the mechanism by which the commission has the ability to look at the specifics for each case, so.
I mean, why, okay, I don't see, no, I have no other comments. I must see why we just wouldn't recommend approval, but anyhow.
Commissioner Roberts? You're muted. You are muted.
Sorry about that. So I have one big question. Obviously, you know, we like this because we've talked about it and it makes good sense. I spoke to Mr. Newell today because I wonder why we are limiting at all the number of units that can be converted to rental residential from a hotel use. So in other words, why would we have, maybe, all right, so excuse this as an example. Maybe there was an apartment building that had ten units that got converted to a hotel and wants to convert back. Well, let's say they want to use other space in the building or they want to reduce larger units into smaller units. So we might have some apartment stock that's one bedrooms or even smaller units for people who want those. Why are we limiting that at all? Why wouldn't we let them convert to any number as long as it fit, you know, most other, you know, design standards? I know parking is an issue that, you know, we need to look at that seriously. But it, I think we should look at each case on a case by case basis. We want to attract people to come in with these conversions. And I think we should leave it open for creativity and use of the space. We have very little affordable apartments, right? And sometimes that just means smaller units. Maybe somebody wants to create micro units, which is a huge trend in development now, and it makes for more affordable housing. Or let's say people who split their time here for work. So I just wonder why we have any minimum number of units in these conversions. I would simply have the ordinance say hotel units can be converted to housing and then leave it open.
Just to note that Commissioner Irvin has left us.
He's still here and he's muted and is raising his hand.
Oh, do you wish, do you want to be recognized, Commissioner Irvin?
No, I'm just telling them good night.
I thought you wanted to speak.
Okay, so JR's just raised an issue. Do we want to have a staff, staff response to that for, at all? I would just say that I like doing this in general. The issue of reconfiguring would isn't isn't an anathema to me, but what, what is staff's response to that suggestion?
Yeah, I think the, this started from a project that had come in, an application that was received by the city. Certainly, staff can look at exploring more flexibilities and seeing how that, you know, what impact she might have from having greater flexibility and, but, you know, things we want to address as far as loopholes to avoid a project that, you know, hey, we wanted to allow for a greater density. Someone decided to add on, you know, five thousand square foot addition. And then now that they have this free for all for density, they're going to take this loophole and do, you know, the, so it's, I think it's just something that we want to further take a, another look at. But yeah, we can look at having greater flexibility in it too.
Would you handle that? And that's supposed to Flynn and Jim.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, could you repeat the question?
Question, the suggestion was allowing flexibility. Say it was a a ten unit apartment building that converted, and it was all three bedrooms and it converted to thirty rental, thirty hotel units. Would we require them to go back to ten, ten apartment units? Or could there be any flexibility in that?
And the reason being, what if they created fifteen or twenty great efficiency, efficiency units or bachelors, as they used to be called? Or what if, as a hotel, they had converted the apartments into large suites? And now they wanted to cut them back down to smaller rental units? My concern about this ordinance, the way it's written, is there's no flexibility. They would have to go back to ten apartments and that might be extremely costly or, or it may not be, it might not make financial sense to them. And if our goal is, is to, to, or we find it desirous to have hotel units converted back to apartments, I'm just looking for all the flexibility that we can have in this and to make it, make it as attractive as possible. I see. Thank you, Commissioner Roberts, Madam Chair. The task that I was working with staff on, the concept we were working with at the time was basically a one for one conversion process. If you have a fifteen unit hotel that used to be an apartment building, you could go to a fifteen unit apartment building and there'd be that one for one transition. If, if the city's policy was to allow a, a larger transition, say fifteen hotel units to twenty or twenty five smaller apartment units or something, that would be a policy call of the city. We could probably write something in the ordinance to that effect. That said, our office has also recommended, in addition to an ordinance to that effect, also a general plan amendment that recognizes this special exception from the density limits that are in the general plan. But again, you know, whether to do that or not would ultimately be a policy call of the city. With that, I would defer to our director to see if he has any further thoughts on that.
Yeah, as you were speaking, one of the thoughts that just came to my mind is could we word it as such that we would allow a density bonus on top of those original number of units? One of the benefits of doing that is by allowing a density bonus, it would guarantee that that percentage of units would be affordable, which is one of our goals. So perhaps, Vice Chair Roberts, that's how we do it, is through allowing the use of the density bonus and then doing that in the purpose of doing affordable units, if we were to allow more and smaller units.
You know what, Director, that, that is a great idea and that's something that I had mentioned to Mr. Newell today, that perhaps we do this with sugar rather than vinegar. And, you know, we can't get people to build apartments anymore. It's too expensive, it doesn't pencil out. Here's the one opportunity to add apartments affordably and fast to the rental market. I'd love us to see everything we can do to make this appealing.
What, what I would do with it, though, is to allow a density bonus for affordability, but, but allow at least a room for unit conversion. I'm not sure however, however you're looking at that, Flynn, or allowing them to go back to what they originally had without the density bonus or allowing the density bonus.
We'll try and work with that and see what we can come up with.
Does that meet what you wanted to do, Commissioner Roberts?
Yeah, that's definitely a good start. Again, I just don't, I, I haven't, I can't find any reason, and I haven't heard any reason from staff on why we wouldn't give, we wouldn't allow more units within the same footprint or even the addition of units if it's a large property. It's, it just seems like a very opportune moment when somebody wants to convert existing buildings to multifamily housing, where we virtually have zero applicants willing to come in and do that for us.
Are there any other comments, Commissioner Maruzzi? Do you have any additional? Shall we go to the next topic? Mr. Newell?
Okay, so our next topic is a discussion on, I have it as Central Business District land use density, but this is really relevant for any mixed use project. So our central business district, as you know, it's the core of our downtown. It spans generally from Ramon Road to the south, as you see here on the right in the graphic, to Alejo Road to the north and a little bit further in some cases on both sides of Palm Canyon and Indian Canyon. It's shown in the red. And what it allows for is a mix of commercial, office, residential at a higher concentration and density than other areas of the city. It does allow for one floor, one floor area ratio or a density of twenty one to thirty dwelling units per acre. But certain areas are permitted at a greater intensity of four FAR and seventy dwelling units per acre through a planned development district or specific plan. When we looked at some existing projects in the city, whether those are in the CBD or other commercial districts, we have some examples that we'll go through where we talk about how these projects, what, what they're, what they are in terms of how many residential units they have, as well as their density based on the size of the lot that they're on. So many of our develop, many, many of these developments that I'm going to go through tonight do not comply with this minimum of twenty one dwelling units per acre, but they're, but they are, but they are good examples of projects that we thought were desirable for the city. As well, we've seen a recent project that does not, was not able to comply with the minimum density standards for the CBD. And that was the project at North Palm Canyon in Chino. And I'll go over that to my examples here. So in terms of existing mixed use projects that we have on one twenty three North Palm Canyon and on block C of the downtown project, there are four residential units. On the site is about an acre in size. It does not comply with a minimum of twenty one dwelling units per acre, but it, it's about at, it's, you know, developed at four point one two dwelling units per acre. So this is just one example where, you know, obviously we want to encourage housing downtown, but it doesn't comply with the minimum threshold. Six seven three North Palm Canyon Drive, further up the main thoroughfare. There is one residential unit on less than a quarter acre at a density based on the size of the lot. It is fourth, four point three five dwelling units per acre. And it's located in the central business district. So it does not comply with the minimum threshold of twenty one to the acre. Further north on Palm Canyon, the project site at eight oh three North Palm Canyon Drive, there are twelve dwelling units above retail. This project actually does comply with the minimum threshold of twenty one point four three dwelling units per acre. However, it is not in the central business district. It's actually in our neighborhood community commercial designation, which was the designation applied to this area in the two thousand and seven general plan. But again, I think the point is, is it's a good example of a mixed use project where you have retail on the ground floor and residential above. Nine oh one North Palm Canyon Drive further north. It does have, it has actually only three residential units on point six acres. So that equates to five dwelling units per acre. It is part of the, also part of the neighborhood community commercial general plan designation. So in this case, it does not comply with the minimum threshold if it were to meet a CBD cast classification, but it's part of the NCC classification. There's a building at one zero eight one North Palm Canyon Drive. It has three residential units. It's on less than half an acre. And its density is six point three dwelling, six point four dwelling units per acre. Again, it's part of the NCC classification. But it is also, you know, at six acres, six dwelling units to the acre roughly. And then lastly, the proposed project that the commission reviewed at a study session in January of this year, located at the northwest corner of Palm Canyon and Chino, is twenty four residential units on two point four acres and that equates to ten dwelling units per acre. This is a mixed use project with retail, commercial at the front, but the remainder of the project is residential with the minimum threshold that the city has for CBD, it does not comply with that twenty one dwelling units per acre. So we wanted to present some examples of what we thought were good examples in our kind of commercial corridor areas where we have residential densities at less than the minimum threshold of twenty one per acre. But we, so we, we thought that those were good examples that were, are cases where we went, went to preclude a project from being, you know, mixed use project from not having residential. So what we're suggesting as a fix for this issue is lowering the threshold from twenty one dwelling units per acre to ten dwelling units per acre for to ten dwelling units per acre for mixed use projects in the central business district. Uh, and with that, I'll turn it back to the manager.
Before we go into the study session aspect of this, what was the lowest, um, number that we had for a minimum?
In the examples that we had?
Yes.
Four.
Four.
Four point one two.
And a, a question for both staff and Mr. Priest. Do we need a minimum?
We really don't. Maybe let me back up just a little bit on that. I, as I say, we really don't need a minimum threshold. I want to qualify that by saying we don't need a minimum threshold as it applies to mixed use development in commercial districts. Thresholds are important in residential districts, especially in our multifamily residential districts where we want to encourage more housing units. And here in Palm Springs, we have a horrible past of underdeveloping our multifamily districts. Um, and that's something that leaves us in the situation that we're in currently relative to affordable housing development. What is unique about commercial districts is the fact that we do allow mixed use. Um, and so in those instances for mixed use projects in commercial districts, I would say no threshold is really necessary, especially as we're looking at conversion of second floors of buildings. In those situations, it's very difficult to meet any type of a threshold because you are dealing with existing space. And so for that reason, as David has shown in the examples, I would say it wouldn't be necessary.
So it's possible here to look at this like what you're doing, but eliminate the, the lower threshold.
And eliminate it, but only for mixed use projects. If there were ever to be a, uh, residential project in CBD that was solely residential, we would expect to see some type of a minimum threshold be met to maximize the density potential.
That, and we were sued once on, um, on a parcel, I believe, because we reduced it to the density too much. Am I correct? That was a, that was a, a mixed project, or maybe it was all housing.
It's all housing.
It was all housing. So, uh, my, those are my questions. Do we have comments? Commissioner Maruzzi?
So if, uh, a project was proposed, let's say the Rios project as mixed use, but all, the only thing they're proposing was a small cafe or coffee house, the whole project is considered mid, mixed use at that point?
Correct.
So in that sense, if they wanted to, uh, if they didn't want it to be more dense, they could just put in a small cafe. If they didn't put in the cafe, then they would be required to have more density. It was strictly residential.
Right.
Hmm. So are, is that an unintended consequence of this? I'm just trying to understand, think about examples where someone might come in and say, well, you know, we want to sell these as luxury units. We don't want to have twenty-one units per acre. Let's just put a corner cafe and that's, you know, eight hundred square feet. And that way we can, uh, you know, go ahead and do it for, you know, far less than twenty-one units per acre.
Pose an interesting question. If we did second story or above with no density minimums, so that we were encouraging housing on the second floor in mixed use? And where it was on the first floor, the ten uni, the ten units per acre? Flynn, what would your thoughts be about that?
That is one potential way to go. Um, that would certainly assist us in the conversion examples particularly, uh, which is something that we do want to encourage. Um, where it wouldn't help us is with the Rios project. Um, that basically would eliminate that project from ever going forward.
Now, i- if you had no threshold limits for the second floor and above, because the Rios project is first floor housing.
Yeah, yeah, correct. It does have housing on the first floor with that smaller commercial component.
So if you left the ten unit minimum threshold for projects like the Rios that were mixed use but first floor and has no threshold for second floor, could we break it up that way?
We can take a look at that. And David, if you'd just make a note and see if that might be a way to do that. That does help to solve a problem in terms of projects that are less dense than they could be, which as Mr. Maruzzi brought up, is one of the possibilities under this.
Uh, Commissioner Roberts?
I just want to say that I concur very much with what we're talking about. I, I don't see again, a good argument for, um, limit, limits. Um, if, if again, any building is willing to add housing, commercial building, especially upstairs and bring housing to the downtown, which, you know, gets people closer to, um, public transportation or walking or creates a more urban world, um, that seems to me is a really good thing. And if, let's say they wanted, you know, we have lots of families who might need a three bedroom apartment versus a one bedroom. So if somebody wanted to convert to two or three large apartments, um, versus, you know, ten one bedrooms, it seems like we should create the opportunity for that as well. So I very much concur with what I'm hearing from my colleagues. Again, leaving complete flexibility in creating residential units and not forcing them into a minimum number.
I have to say that, I agree with what you're saying, but I, what I'm saying is when you're dealing with a vacant parcel, not in, you know, a conversion from commercial to something else, we would want to have a minimum because we don't want them just to build, uh, luxury housing there. Right, if the goal is that we want to increase density, if you have a vacant parcel like the Rios parcel, we don't want them to come in with ten units, each of which is, you know, three thousand square feet or whatever, if we want to increase density. And all they have to do is a cafe.
I would concur with you, except if they're rentals. We so, we're so desperate for rental units. So if they're even creating larger rental units, I would encourage that over more commercial or office.
Are they Rios strictly condos? Or single family, whatever they are, they're not, they're not rentals, right?
They originally approached us as rentals. David, have they changed their, their configuration at all? Were they intended to be condos or were they rentals?
They've submitted a map, so I believe they'd be condos.
Well, they are condos now, okay.
That's different, I concur. Hey gang, I'm sorry, I have to go, um, I have another commitment. Um, but I very much concur with what I'm hearing here. And I'm, and I'm really excited we're looking at this. Thank you, both of these ordinances.
Um, we're not quite finished, so if you're leaving, um, we'll just sum up on this and, and end the meeting in five minutes. Do you have, do you have to leave now or do you want to wait till we?
I can wait for, I can wait five minutes. I just have, I have to get in the car and be someplace at six thirty.
So just to sum this up, the recommendation would be for second and third or higher stories, uh, no minimums, um, maximum densities, but no minimums imposed so that we encourage both the building and the conversion of, of upstairs space, the conversion of upstairs space and building apartment units above.
In mixed use.
In mixed use.
Yeah, I, I would concur with that.
And only mixed use. The Rios project is different because it's not a second and third story. Uh, it's ground floor units. And in that situation, I don't have a problem with going to ten units to the acre as a minimum. I think we would want at least a minimum threshold. And the real question is, do people want that kind of a project? Um, because if we don't do, if we don't do this minimum, we won't have it. I would rather get housing downtown, even though it's luxury sales housing.
What is the density proposed for the Rios project per acre?
Ten units to the acre.
But again, I'm just wondering, Flynn, you had mentioned that the goal is to increase density.
It's to increase housing. Um, especially as we look at second floor conversions, we're happy to get what we can get.
About vacant parcels that, um, you know, we might want to have more density and ten may not be enough.
Yeah, and that's what we heard from you as the commission. So we'll take a look at that and how we might achieve that.
I think the upper floor, lower floor thing makes sense. If we, if it's ground floor, yeah, let's ask for minimums. But anytime it's a second floor or a conversion, let's let them do whatever they want as long as it's house, rental housing.
I, I don't mind going to ten so that we get some housing.
But what if they can't do that, Kathy? What if, what if they, ten is too expensive and too difficult, they want to do four?
No, no, no. All I'm saying is we're doing ground floor. I'm not, the second, second floor is, I think we're in agreement on that. Either new built or, uh, as long as the ground floor is commercial. In this instance, the Rios project, the frontage, you have a dog?
Well, I have somebody's dog who won't leave me alone unless I pick him up. He's jumping on me and it's a little distracting, so he is now participating in the meeting. Everybody meet Commissioner Jax.
Oh, Jesus.
How lovely. Uh, so what I'm saying is, as long, in the Rios project, the frontage is commercial. The back is housing. I don't mind in that kind of an instance, because it's a very deep lot. I don't mind allowing ten units to the acre.
I, I'm right with you on that.
So, so I would keep that standard, but I would want to see the frontage of the property be commercial. And if they, if they're doing something behind it, that's, um, that's housing, that's, that's completely fine with me because that, the back portion of that large project is never going to work really well as a commercial project.
Can I just say, that would solve the issue of just having a little eight hundred square foot unit corner cafe and the rest of it being on the street front, be residential. As long as you require that the street frontage be res, uh, commercial, I think that would make sense to have the ten per acre.
And then we lose housing.
I've got to go, guys. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, are we in agreement to, does that, is that workable for you, Flynn?
Yeah, I think that will work and so we'll go ahead and draft that up and get that going.
Perfect. So we are, um, ending this meeting and we are continuing until our regular meeting on, at five thirty on January twelfth of twenty twenty-two. Oh my goodness. Happy Chris, or happy holidays. Uh, happy new year to everybody.
And to you as well. And thank you for your time this evening, Commissioners, we really appreciate it.
Good discussion, thank you.
Thank you.